Thank you everyone, I'd like to welcome to the September 16th Board of Education meeting. Ms. Regan, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gardner?
Here.
Mrs. McAvina is absent. Mrs. Opaskar?
Here.
Mr. Sherbin?
Here.
Mr. Stobbe?
Here.
Would you please rise for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of equal rights and justice for all.
All right. We have a couple of items to start with on our special presentation. So Dr. DeBee, you want to get us going? Report card time, right?
Yes, sir. Well, yesterday, the...
Just so...
Okay, there we go. Yesterday, the Ohio Department of Education workforce released the annual report cards. And take a few minutes to go through those. The report cards for any school or district in the state can be found at education.ohio.gov. And our overall rating is four and a half out of five stars. I'm going to go through this. You're going to actually see that our scores look similar, or in some cases, higher than the past. But there is a new measure this year, which I'll talk about, which affected our score a little bit. But achievement is, again, five stars, which means we significantly exceed state standards in achievement. Progress, we are four stars again, which is a great accomplishment as a district, knowing that our kids are already at the highest level and we're still making more than a year's growth. Gap closing, again, this is a very difficult one to get five stars in. And I have a slide on this. Every single subgroup that the state calculates, Avon Lake was above the expected gains in both English and math. Every grade level, every test. The gap closing means that we are doing a great job bringing our students who are at the lower levels of achievement closer to the higher levels of achievement. Our graduation is five stars again. Early literacy is four stars, which means that our younger students are growing and excelling in the standard, a higher level than the state average. And then college career workforce and military readiness, we were three stars. This is a new measure this year, and I'll explain a little bit about that in the intricacies and how we're going to move forward from that. There are the ratings for all of the schools. It's important to note, even though the... each school has a rating, the actual average is based on the grade level scores, not each building's scores. This is our academic progress. So all of the areas that you see in the green and the gray and light blue are areas where we made a year's worth of growth or more. So really, we have two areas that are of concern where we didn't hit the mark, and they are both at seventh and eighth grade. And we'll be working with the teachers at those grade levels to bring those up to the levels that we, you know, have achieved everywhere else in the district. But overall, a great job on the progress. Achievement, you'll notice every year, our achievement gets just a little bit higher. And this PowerPoint is also online on the agenda. So if you really want to take a look at all those small numbers, you can see each test and our proficiency level. This is gap closing. Every one of these yellow dots was the goal the state set for us based on our scores the previous year. Everything to the right of those dots is how much we excelled the state's goal in closing the gap. This is way beyond significant. This is just fantastic. Look how much territory there is to the right of every one of those. And there it lists all of the various subgroups. But all across, we exceeded every single time the state's goal for us in closing the gap in our achievement for ELA and math. Early literacy, again, it looks really good. This is a measure of the number of kids that drop off of what are called RIMPs, Reading Improvement Plans, at each grade level and pass the third grade reading guarantee. And again, we are excelling in the state standards in that area. Okay, this is the new score, college career workforce and military readiness. So there's really four components to this. The first part is all college readiness, and it's ACT participation, ACT remediation free, SAT participation, SAT remediation free. And we do great on those. Same thing with the honors diploma, the AP scores, AP scores three or higher, et cetera. We did fantastic on the college part. The areas that are new, which are areas, and I'm going to explain a little bit about this, are... these are career or workforce areas. So we have one called industry-recognized credential. Those are for kids who are not in a college path, but typically might be a student at the JVS. And if they're down at the JVS, are they reaching whatever the industry credential is for that? We have military enlistment. Even though we had three kids, it's showing we didn't have any. We're going to have to, you know, take a look at that because this is the second year in a row it's registering that even though we're submitting that. So we'll continue to look at this. Apprenticeship, this is again, something that right now is going through the JVS, looking at some of their programs and the achieved proficiency on three or more technical assessments. So we're looking at things that we can do to get kids career-ready who are not on our pathways, that are not on a typical college pathway. But understand, in Lorain County, one school district got a five in this. Oberlin, which coincidentally is also where the JVS is located. And one school district got a four, which was Firelands, which is also right there. They have a lot more kids that are taking advantage of the trades. Every other school district in Lorain County got either a three like we did, or a two, or a one. So this is a new measure in the state, and not that we're happy with getting a three, we're not. But it's... I want everyone to understand the base level of where we're working for. So in some ways, when your kids do really well on the college side and you don't have a lot of kids in the career path, it skews the score because of how the 13 areas are measured.
Jack, question for you about how we interact with Greater Cleveland Partnership today on the apprenticeship programs that they've been building. And if not, could we explore that in the upcoming year to make sure that we're fully apprised of those as well and make those available?
So that's actually... I've been meeting with each of the principals to develop their goals after they looked at their tests, and that's actually one of the things the high school has on their list. We are a member of the Lorain County Business Advisory Council. And actually, one of the things on my report is that we are sending 160 students to a career fair at the Lorain County Fairgrounds. That's being put on by the Business Advisory Council, which is for kids in grades seven through 12. That's more trades, industry workforce. But we are joining up with the, you know, Greater Cleveland in terms of looking at bringing some programs here as well.
Well, I just know, so my former colleague, Karen Carter, leads all of that work. So if there's an introduction needed, please do let me know.
Absolutely.
Dr. DeBee?
Yes?
Can you refresh my memory? About how many students do we have in the JVS at our high school right now, do you know?
Um, I don't have the number for this year, but last year was about 67.
Okay. So, and that's 67, nine through 12?
Nine through 12, yes. So, about 6%?
Yeah.
7%?
One of the things, just as a parent of a senior and someone who just went through a couple of years ago, I think one of the things that might affect these apprenticeship slash other jobs is that it seems like, from a student's perspective, again, this is more tangential knowledge, seeing it as a parent, but the college credit plus emphasis by a lot of kids now seems to be growing. I know we've increased our offerings, but that is something that seems to be real... I don't know how that affects our grading, but kids seem very locked in, whereas maybe 10 or 15 years ago, it was AP classes and a little bit of CC+. Like, from... I'm hearing a lot of kids taking CC+ because they're focused on trying to get those classes and credits before they go to college.
And that's a good point. I mean, we, this year, have added eight more CC+ classes to our program. But if you look at the pathways, this is part of this calculation. As I said, in the post-secondary, again, we're well above the dots of where we should be. We're far to the right on those. This is enrolled in Ohio Tech School, enrolled in apprenticeship, gain full employment, or military enlistment. To hit these targets, these targets would have to come down.
Yeah.
Because there's only 100% of the kids total. So if these numbers are going to go up, to add to 100%, these numbers are going to come down. So it doesn't make... you know, mathematically, it's a puzzle, but that's how the state's calculating this right now.
Have we ever gathered data on the success rate of our students that have gone on to pursue these pathways and whether or not they were unsuccessful in their initial run at that? Meaning, I went off to four-year college and I wasn't really ready, and maybe that wasn't for me.
So we have data that through anyone who's ever taken a CC+ class, that shows how many of them graduated within five years. So last year, the most recent year, which would have been kids who graduated high school five years ago, 82% of them that took a CC+ class finished a four-year degree within five years, which is pretty impressive.
That's pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for having that data available.
I'm a geek, what can I say? I know numbers. Again, we're doing well with gifted. These are our student demographics. I will point out, for the first time ever, we're just over 10% and economically disadvantaged. Just showing a little bit of changes in the community. We're at 14.7, and in the past, we've been right around 10%. The state felt it was important to put something in the report card about school choice options. And it shows how many of our stu... how many Avon Lake residents are taking vouchers. And then here's our financial data. Autumn, I knew you would appreciate this slide. The state's giving us a whopping 16% of our budget. These are all of our sources of where we're getting funding for. And again, that's the end of the report card. Any other questions?
So, has this become like public to everyone yet? Or how does that process work for... I know we're going to put our information out, but how would other people in the community know about this?
Sure. So it's... the state released it with a whole bunch of news releases. I saw it on several TV stations. It's on cleveland.com. But again, anyone that wants to look up anything in more detail, I just happen to have this pulled up here. For those of you that are in the audience, you go to education.ohio.gov, you click on school report cards, and then you start typing. And it'll... I guess you should actually have the cursor in the right spot, but... Here's Avon Lake City. And then this is all interactive. You can click any of the areas, and you can click view more data, and you can look at, again, some of these graphs and things that I pulled up. There's a lot more data that you could go into, but this is available for any school or district in the state.
Jack, a question about the school choice slide. On the non-public school, I guess, if I'm understanding this correctly, it says one student participated in, what, the traditional Ed Choice Scholarship? And then when the state expanded it, made vouchers available to a higher income levels, it says now 633 students have taken?
Correct.
Obviously, we didn't have 633 students all of a sudden decide to leave Avon Lake. So these... a lot of those numbers are kids who are already in private school that just now are eligible to take a voucher.
The number increased by 70 from the year before. Last year, it was about 560, and this year, so there was an increase in the number of kids taking vouchers in Avon Lake and, quite honestly, all across the state. Anything else? All right. The only other thing I wanted to mention is we have visioning sessions coming up next week on our early release day. The Troy and Leirwood staffs will be here at the High School Commons doing visioning with the architects. And that is the entire staff, not just the teaching staff, but we'll have custodians and secretaries, and we'll have bus drivers, we'll have lots of people representing the buildings as we look at the visioning. And then, right now, we have about 95 invitations that have gone out to the community for the community visioning, representing every aspect of the community. Parents, non-parents, civic leaders, business leaders. We have 10 students coming, mostly at the younger, you know, fourth, fifth, sixth grades, staff members, administrators. So we will have a great couple of sessions to really get some input as community and what the staff sees as the best way to move forward with the design of the new middle school.
And Dr. DeBee, to add on to that, the facilities committee that existed prior to us even going down the path of LEVI, you know, recently got together in the last couple of weeks, and we had a very productive meeting. Mr. Sherbin and I were there, where the architects kind of laid out how some of these visiting sessions will help contribute to getting us on a right path to building design. There were a lot of great questions that came out of that small group. So I can only imagine, once these visiting sessions come together, what else will be kind of brought together. But, you know, we're thankful for those volunteers for kind of getting back together and now being on our new facilities committee to help us as we go through this process.
We're very fortunate that we've had so many parents and staff members take an active role in the facilities planning committee for four and a half years. I was telling them our first meeting was May 24th, 2021. And our meeting last week was kind of a celebration that we're doing something other than wondering what should go on the ballot.
Yeah. All right. Thanks, Jack. Any other questions for Dr. DeBee?
Just really quickly, just noting that there was something about Career Pathways Expo. Is that something that you had?
I didn't hear. I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Career Pathways Expo, middle...
Oh, yeah. So that was what I was mentioning, that we are sending 160 students to the Lorain County Fairgrounds. And middle school is going on the 21st, and the high school students that are going will go on the 22nd. And there's about 40 to 50 different businesses and trade representatives and so forth that the kids will actually be participating in activities and sessions.
Thank you. All right. I think we're on to Dr. Lawver with our buildings and grounds report.
Well, I will echo Dr. DeBee's sentiment that I'm glad we're not worried about the ballot. I'm glad we're not worried about the future of several of our facilities, and it is starting to brighten the picture a little bit and giving us a lot of certainty as to what we are going to need to do, you know, in the short and long term with our buildings. But wanted to give you a quick update. This is probably the only time you'll see me shamelessly put my kids on a presentation. But we had to go out and try the new tennis courts this summer. That's Julian in the foreground there, and then I've got Double Trouble there in the background, unsuccessfully attempting to play some doubles on the courts. It was with mixed results that night, but that's okay. We still have time to teach them. But we had a good time on the new courts, and they are gorgeous, and we'll get back into that in a little bit. So just wanted to bring you up to speed on what's going on in our buildings, what we were doing over the last year or so since we last talked. At the high school, lots of improvements at the high school. We are now able to bring more of a focus back to the high school in a lot of ways because of the certainty we now have at the other buildings. The high school portion of the... all the parking lot and asphalt work we did this summer was about $80,000. When students ask where their permit fees go to, every so often, that is where the permit fees go to, is signage and asphalt improvements and striping. This campus is used by thousands of people all the time, all year long, almost 24/7/365. And so about half of the cost of all asphalting projects in the district was here at the high school. And you can see that result as you drive around campus. We also had some major repairs to sidewalks and an accessible curb at the North Commons entrance, placed some new bike racks. And the Class of 1984 donated a memorial bench that's located right out that way toward right there. See it through the window over there, the new window that we installed last year that was fogging up. But you can see what we did outside of the North Commons there. That's before the anchors were put in. It was time to give some love to that entrance there in terms of the concrete work. The new bike racks look great. They can accommodate some wider tires, as is the style now. And the bench, I feel like it's looking in the mirror right now. It's a beautiful bench. Tracy Healy and the Class of 1984 were very proactive in donating that for us, and I see people enjoying it as they walk their dogs about every morning. Major project that's happening right now, well, we have a couple of things. First, we replaced the choir room floor. I've got a picture of that. Next, we have some lighting work in the PAC that's going to continue probably over the next three years, as all of that stuff is, you know, 25 years old at this point, and the technology will need to be updated. And we have a roof replacement that's going to happen over the 1974 wing, the wood shop, the metal shop, and the technology department. You can see a picture of it there. There's also a roof hatch in the background that we need to grade as we go to make it OSHA compliant. This is one of the ones I'm really proud of from this year, was we just finished this before the school year started. That choir room floor was taking a real beating here at the high school, lots of equipment rolling over it. We're trying some luxury vinyl plank instead of vinyl tile in there to see if it pulls up a little bit better. It's also a product that doesn't need stripping and waxing every year, so we hopefully save a little bit on maintenance costs. But that was a nice little project for us at the end of the summer. It's hard to believe that our... a lot of our athletic facilities, especially Memorial Stadium, is now... those improvements are now 15 years old at Memorial Stadium. And so we continually have to refresh and give that a little bit of love. As I mentioned, the tennis and pickleball facility is completed. We're waiting for a shed to come in. That actually, that project came in about, I think, $70,000 or $80,000 under budget because we did not need to use all of our allowances for soil mitigation and things like that. And the drainage on there is pretty good, so we are projecting that that will be a nice project for us for years to come. Added some storage that was donated by the football club out at the stadium, and we replaced the press box windows. We had to give some love to the press box this summer, and we did some asphalting in the stadium as well. And we're planning a new project. It should be done by, I think, late October in the competition gym. And I just want to highlight this because this is a true partnership here. Our old scoreboards are in pretty bad shape, and they weren't connecting right. There was... we were going to have to put a bunch of money into them, so we started to look at other options. We have an option to do some new digital scoreboards in there. They will really be top of the line. We do not have to pay for those scoreboards because we will enter into an advertising-sharing agreement with the company and because our booster's organization is generously covering the software costs, because everything has a cloud software cost now, right? But as they are covering that cost, we went from probably looking at a significant investment to do something in our scoreboards to something that is cost-neutral, where we'll actually generate some revenue for other athletic projects into the future. So for the next eight to 10 years, we'll have these beautiful digital scoreboards in there, but they can also be used by the high school during assemblies and things of that nature. That project should be done, I want to say, the week of October 22nd, if that's Monday in there somewhere. I don't know what the week is, but third week in October, we ought to be done with that just in time for winter sports season to start kicking off there in November, December. So really excited about that. But when you see a bunch of advertising in there, remember, it's paying for the beautiful scoreboards, and we're very excited about that project. I think it's going to be a nice one for us. Safety and security-wise, we added on top of the concrete out there. The anchors are not just for aesthetics, they're also bollards, obviously, to mitigate high-speed approaches to the building. So they are a security feature along with the pipe and post bollards that we installed. Some of that was grant-funded, and we are also closing out a security alarm project that's in the punch list phase in this building. We will have a functional system that we can zone off and do some other things with here at the high school. It's a large and complicated project. That was also grant-funded. Over at Eastview, lots of... our main focus at the elementary this summer was moves. And so we don't have as many projects taking place there. Asphalting projects obviously took place on all the campuses. We are developing the scope of work for the renovations that are going to go into the buildings. But mainly, the focus was on moves. And if you were here in, you know, June and July, you saw lots of boxes everywhere with lots of labels on them. I give a huge kudos and shout-out to our maintenance and custodial departments for ensuring that everything got where it needed to be. They worked with the movers on that. They were just in constant motion over the summer, getting things prepared and ready to go and getting classrooms ready. There were some really complicated things that were happening this summer, from ceiling fans to some other things within the buildings that were very time-consuming, and they did that job very well for us. Obviously, we are... have removed Erieview from our portfolio of buildings housing students at this point. You can see the room of boxes there as we move that, and we will continue to maintain that facility until final decisions are made as to its future. And so we're doing some minimal work over there, but we have begun to prep that building for some surplus equipment, auctioning, and whatever may transpire between the district and the city in the desire to keep that building in a public portfolio for Avon Lake for the long term. Over at Leirwood, again, minimal stuff happening there because now we have certainty that the building is coming down in three years. So we did have some parking lot work to do over there. We completed a repair of the office air conditioning that was in bad shape. We also have a major project that's in place there with some support from the boosters. They... we're working on a track repair project over there. So the track is regulation size. The field events all have been... are going to be rejuvenated. We'll have some fencing done over there and some other neat things. So right now, that is in the phase where the asphalt is resting. It has been poured. It is resting now for a month, so we have some activities taking place, and we're being careful with it. And then we'll shut it down again in October while we do some of the final... the surfacing work and the striping that will happen over there. So we're just kind of waiting for that to cure right now and sit. We've had great weather for it over the last couple of weeks. I finally lucked out on the weather. And so we're on track to finish that project by the end of October and roll into next spring with a beautiful new track facility over there that will be able to be integrated with the future building. You can see with the shape that the track was in over there, wearing down to the asphalt underneath. So it was time to take that on, and I think people are going to be really pleased with the result of that. And again, thanks to the athletic boosters for some help with that project as well. We think we're going to have enough left over to do some accessible seating arrangements and some other neat things over on that facility. Redwood, our biggest elementary school, almost 60,000 square feet. We did some manual parking lot work there as well. We completed the bulk of our moves across the district to Redwood from Erieview and from other schools. So there was a lot of movement this summer at Redwood. They did a great job with that. We repaired some air conditioning. Redwood has a little bit more air conditioning than some of the other buildings because there's a newer wing on there. The cafeteria wing is newer. And so we did a repair on the AC in the art room library area. We brought the second kiln over from Erieview to service our largest building here, and so we have a second kiln now at Redwood that we were able to take from Erieview. We just replaced, unfortunately, we just ran out of time on the rooftop units over the cafeteria and kitchen. They failed in the spring, so we worked on a replacement and got that in place actually just this past week. Those units arrived, and they will be back up and running for the cafeteria and kitchen. And we will be able to reimburse those through the improvements project. And we also reconfigured the front office space for some more LEAP support as our LEAP program has continued to expand over the years. We have, what, about 515 students now at Redwood? So it is a... almost a full house over there, and lots of activity happening over at that elementary school. Nothing major at transportation. We just... we continue to see some undercarriage rot on our oldest buses that at one point had been stored outside. That's how old they are. They predate the transportation facility itself. And the building itself is starting to show some wear and tear as it approaches year 15. So we're going to have to take care of some things there. One of the things we had to replace there over the summer was a hot water heater, and we also need to look at some things with the walls and structure of the building as well. But we'll keep an eye on that and make sure that that building stays maintained. Troy, very minimal work at Troy. We had to put in a new water heater. It failed. It's just one of those things you have to do, even though the building is going away in three years. We're in pretty good shape over there otherwise. We did very minimal work in the parking lots because the parking lots and sidewalks have all gotten some attention over the last couple of years. So Troy is holding pretty solid right now as we prepare to transition away from that building to a new campus. Over at Westview, same thing. The parking lots and sidewalks got some love. We completed an office and air conditioning replacement in the office, and neither's happy about that. It was in... it was not in great shape. Hopefully, it's still working. Hopefully, I'm not speaking out of turn there. But we also had a major fire system repair that was completed last school year. We're going to have to stay on top of that. Our fire alarm systems and notification systems are all approaching a certain age at this point, and so we're strategically looking at how we're going to do that, either through the renovations or separately, just to keep up with the new technology and to make sure that everything's working properly. We were able to take care of one of those at Westview as well. The rest is going to, you know, be rolled into the renovation projects. So we have challenges, like we can't shrink away from the challenges. So we have challenges, like we can't, we can't shrink away from the challenges. We've had some major HVAC failures recently. Some of the things that we were concerned about are happening, like the sanitary waste piping systems under Learwood were falling apart this summer, and we had to do some major repairs. Our goal is to get through the next, you know, three years in those buildings and survive as long as we can with patching and repairs and minimal work and not as many capital improvements because now we have the certainty of the bond issue playing in our favor. So I listed some challenges that we have. I won't go through them all. I think despite the challenges, again, the construction and renovation projects are now, make everything easier to plan. We're very, very grateful to the community that the big picture is now getting clearer, and that just makes it easier to plan. So from a positive standpoint, maybe like really the first time we could see the light at the end of the tunnel facilities-wise, watch this space because in this space, we are going to have a brand-new 160,000-square-foot building, replacing approximately 200,000 square feet currently at Troy and Learwood. I've got a little link there that I'll have, I'll ask Jack to click on here, Dr. Deve to click on there. And everyone can stay on top of our facilities project that's happening on the Learwood site by going to this website. This is linked off our future planning for facilities webpage. I'll put it in my newsletter. Joelle's put it in her newsletter. We're really promoting this out to the community because this is going to be a one-stop-shop to see video of the site, to see construction updates, updated monthly, where we are in that process at the Learwood site. It is a Google site that was developed in conjunction with our architects, and this is going to be a great one-stop-shop for information and lots of pictures and lots of video and things like that about what is physically going on at that site. It's really, really exciting to be able to move beyond the bond issues and all the pre-bond work that we have done into actual construction. And where we are right now in that site is we have a land and boundary survey in progress. I'm waiting on the proposals this week for wetland study, traffic study, those types of things, all that pre-construction work that predates groundbreaking in the spring. So everybody mark your calendars. We're going to have a groundbreaking with helmets and comically oversized shovels turning over symbolic patches of dirt in the spring of next year. And we're doing all that pre-work right now on the site to the point where we're trying to dig up, pun intended, dig up information from like 1959 to see some of the work that was already done on that site when they were building Learwood the first time. So really excited about that. I think it gives us cause for a lot of optimism, and it allows us to really refocus our attention, especially here at the high school, the other buildings, on some things that we can do that will make sure that these facilities stay good for the long haul here over the next 10 to 20 years while we prepare to open a new building. So that's all I have this evening. Lots of stuff that went on over the last year, and we'll keep on, we'll keep on truckin'.
Thanks, Ned. I know, again, our small sample size at our facilities meeting, you know, as soon as you start talking about these things, people get excited, they have questions and so forth. We'll just have to kind of keep, keep ahead of some of those issues. One thing, as you were going through the list, I saw you mention the Learwood parking lot, which I know because I was in the meeting, the Learwood parking lot is staying in the new, new construction, but that might be something that somebody else might not know. And I know there's concerns about transportation and flow, and our architects are really working through all that. There were some good questions about what will it be like when they, how quickly will the other, will the old Learwood get torn down? And, you know, that's not, it doesn't happen that next day, you know? But in speaking with the architects, I know I came away with a lot of confidence that the project that we're taking on is, is well within the scope of a quote-unquote "normal" project, that we, while it may seem tight from the standpoint of somebody looking at the property, how could they fit a building back in there? It's been scoped out. Just, I know I came away with a lot of confidence that we're going down a path. It's not going to be without bumps, but, you know, we will be able to move forward with construction and have school go on as, as much as normal as possible. And then we'll have that transition after the year, after the new building opens, which will be another year of kind of demolition and so forth. So it was interesting to me to see people get so excited about the positivity of it, but then also have a lot of questions. And we'll just have to stay on top of our communication so that people are informed.
Absolutely. We have a, there's a form that people can fill out as questions pop up when they're on that website, and they can go ahead and send something that goes directly to all of us at the district office, and we jump in and answer those questions. We've only had one so far about the Troy property and then outdoor play spaces for fifth and sixth graders. But I really enjoy having those conversations because, again, we're, like you said, we're looking forward to something positive instead of trying to play catch-up ball over the place with, you know, deferred maintenance backlogs and things like that. So it's an exciting time, for sure.
It's funny, Jim, that you mentioned that, you know, it seems tight putting a building behind a building, but in the, when we were evaluating the construction managers, you know, they were like saying how much space there is back there. They're used to doing projects where they're building a school 10 feet from someone's house, not just, you know?
Yeah.
And worried about like pleasing that homeowner. We're back there, you know, we're well away from residences, even though it's tight to the building, but they're, they're, they're used to working with a lot closer tolerances than we.
Yeah, yeah. And that's your perception, just because we don't deal to do with this every day. I also liked how, I know it's all preliminary, but some of the traffic flows that will be once the new building is built, you know, separate drop-off buses and so forth. Anyone who's dealt with Learwood traffic knows it gets kind of congested in that area, but once this is all done, again, we'll have a much better flow to that property because we're building it back away from the road. And I know that'll, that'll make residents much more happy at between 3:00 and 3:30 or whenever the peak times are. So, great stuff, Ned. Any other questions? All right. All right. Jump back to the agenda here. All right, so our next item on the agenda is public participation. Jack, do we have any?
I do not have any. There are no cards filled out for tonight, no.
I won't bother to read all that. Okay. Okay, next we'll move on to the business section of our agenda. First thing is the approval and signing of the minutes for August. We only had one meeting in August, our regular meeting. Did anyone have any issues with the minutes? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the August 19 minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next we'll move on to the treasurer's consent items, which looks to be a pretty short list today.
It is. We have a lot of normal business on the agenda for tonight. We have our regular reports. We do have the establishment of a new fund. It's a hardship scholarship fund in gear, so this is a great way to encourage staff participation. It's going to be to fund hardship scholarships, K-12. So this is establishing that fund in special cost center. We do have a transfer on the agenda tonight. That transfer is going towards our hardship scholarship fund because we have some existing scholarships already in there that we do need to cover the cost of. We have the appropriation amendments, as well as several service contracts, one with Connect, Budsman, Applewood Center. We have a subscription agreement with Raptor, and that's all of the consent items for tonight. It's a short list.
Any questions for Ms. Reed? All right, can I have a motion to approve the treasurer's consent items?
I so move.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we have a couple of discussion action items.
Yes, so the first item is just to, if you remember back in April, you approved the tax rates for the 25, 26-year collection in '26, and those need to be revised due to the passage of both our bond issue and emergency levies. So these are the revised rates.
Okay. And nothing has changed from what was shared at the time of the election with rates and so forth? Yeah, okay.
No, the addition of the levies, if you look in the chart here, the emergency levy will be 1.97 mils, and then the bond levy will be 2.75.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution for the tax rates?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Next item on the board meeting change, can you share kind of the craziness of how this got into the budget and why we have to change our board meeting for this?
Yes. So this ties back to the state budget bill. We're all kind of chuckling a little because sometimes we don't really understand why they make some of the changes that they do, but this is a change that the state is making related to the forecast. So historically, it's been called the five-year forecast, and what the state is going to do is they have, the legislature has voted to reduce that to the current year plus three years. So in essence, a four-year forecast. For our purposes, we will continue to use a five-year forecast just internally for planning tools, but we will submit to the state of Ohio, to the Ohio Department of Education and the workforce. We will submit the four years that are required by law. The reason for the date change of our October meeting is our board meeting was originally, the regular board meeting was originally set for October 21st. Well, with the state budget change, our forecast, the first submission is due August 31st. The second submission is due the last day of February. Well, because this is so rushed, the state has said for this year for fiscal '26, we know school districts aren't going to be able to generate a forecast by this past August, so they've delayed the submission for August to October 15th. So the board would have to approve a five-year forecast by October 15th. So there's a suggested date of October 14th on the agenda, but that's just a placeholder. We can have some discussion about what dates work best for the board.
I'm a little more concerned about the go-forward next year with this August, so let me get this straight. So it's going to be due by August 31st, you said?
Correct.
So, I mean, are the books closed for the year by that point even to use that year?
So the timing of this just makes no sense if you talk to anyone, any treasurer or superintendent, I think, would agree. So a lot of our hiring takes place. Our books for the prior year are closed by the end of, by usually this, no later than the second week in July. We get our books closed for the prior fiscal year. However, a lot of the hiring that gets done is still taking place in August. So your appropriations aren't even completed at that point in time. So what some districts have talked about is taking their forecast from the previous year and maybe having your board approve a third forecast after you close your fiscal year, or right before you close your fiscal year. So, you know, we've had a little bit of discussion with our June board meeting, even taking a regular board meeting in June and postponing that until the end of June. Maybe we tack on the approval of a five-year forecast, what it looks like, and then we would roll basically that five-year forecast into the August submittal, and then February would become more of truly representative of what your year looks like.
So we can still update the forecast at any time, but we have to submit it going forward in August and February?
Correct.
Okay, so this is year 14 for me, and this has never changed before. So, I mean, we traditionally done it in November and in May, and with it being in November, you know, we have, the year is closed, we started the year, everything's kind of set. So I think that's probably going to warrant some more discussion next year because the timing does seem really odd.
It does. And, you know, we can all speculate with the state budget bill why the state has chosen to choose those timelines, but I won't go into those details of speculation.
Yeah, okay. So I think we, this motion is to move our date up one week to Tuesday same time, 6:00 PM on Tuesday. I think all but one of us have a, are good without a conflict that day. So can I make a motion to, or can I have a motion to change the October date from the 21st to 14th?
So moved.
Second. We can go to Gail.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
We're definitely going to need to make sure we get notification out because I can't recall us in the last present history changing a date this close to the next meeting, and we don't want people to show up at the wrong date, so we'll have to make sure we get notice on that.
Correct. And if you notice, if you, for those listening online to the recording tomorrow, if you notice on this agenda, at the very end of this agenda, it does indicate our next board meeting was pending approval. It is listed as October 21st, but now that the board has voted to change that to October 14th, just a reminder, that meeting will be October 14th, and that's our regular board meeting for October.
Can Joelle include, sorry, can Joelle include that in her superintendent's message as well?
I'll have Jim Crook put that in there.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks. All right, item C, the bus chassis. Two buses that are scheduled for replacement?
Correct. I don't know, Dr. Lawver, if there's anything you'd like to add to that?
This is a resolution to participate in the, or to put our name in for the fall bus bid in our attempt to continue to build a strategic cycle of bus replacement. The two buses, as you can see in public content there, we have a couple of buses. One is now 23 years old, and we need to replace that. It's got some significant undercarriage rot. The other one is a little bit newer, but not much, and this is our quest to get on a 17-year replacement cycle on our fleet. The average is probably 14 or 15 years in the state, and we extend because of our indoor bus garage, but we need to make sure that we're on a, on a regular replacement cycle for our fleet of vehicles.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the school cooperative advertising and receiving bids?
So moved. Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Dr. Deve, you're pinch hitting here for the superintendent's consent items.
Sure. It's all regular business. We have a couple items under certified personnel, classified personnel, continued on some additional supplemental contracts. This is the time of the year we have salary changes due to additional hours taken since last year, leave, leave of absence. Friends of the school, we have a donation from Avon Lake Soccer. We have a couple amendments of previously approved agenda items. These are basically dollar amounts that have changed, and this is part of the rollover with the contract, and that is all that we have on the consent items.
This might be the shortest list I've seen in several years, so any questions on those? Can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent items?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we got a couple of discussion action items I'm going to take.
Yeah, the first one is a contract to have an auction of surplus equipment and property from Erieview, not the Erieview property. We wanted to make sure we worded that as clearful as possible, and this is, again, just for the surplus furniture. This is not the property itself.
Okay.
I actually misread that.
I don't know. Dr. Lawver, do you have anything you need to add on that, or? I'll take it as a yes since you're walking this way.
Just real quick, yeah, we went through the moving process, and we took things to Redwood and took things to Eastview and had things labeled, and there were things left over, and things went back and everything like that. over and things went back and everything like that. So now we've gathered all of that surplus stuff in the gym and the cafeteria at Erieview. We're going to walk through with the city to see what they might be interested in leaving behind as part of any potential deal that we're able to do for the sale of the building and then surplus equipment for the district and then other things that we would want to, that we would want to go ahead and auction. So we would use a firm to do that and this would be things like desks and chairs and old stuff that we don't have a need for. The things that we've had a need for, like for example, the kiln has already been removed from that building and repurposed around the district. So this is not, you know, we're, we're not ripping the guts out of the building or anything like that and we're not, this is not an auction of the building. This is just surplus equipment, plain and simple, from that building that we need to do an auction on probably by no later than mid-November.
Would that be like an online auction that would post like the items and the pictures you have times to bid or whatever? How does that work?
Yeah, so this is, this is larger than us taking pictures and putting it online, but what this company would do, we've worked with Fast Track before, I think they do some, have done some technology auctions for us in the past. They'll do like a 30-day public notice of what's there. They will organize the inventory for us and obviously they receive a portion of the, in the, in the agreement, a portion of any sales and just help us kind of clear out our inventory from that.
Great. Can I have a motion to approve the Rising Phoenix agreement?
So moved. Second.
Roll please.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the OPC agreement?
Sure. Dr. Lawver, I'll let you, since you handled the negotiations for this.
So we have a, a new bargaining unit that has formed in the district. We have OPC 326, which is our classified staff. We also have a unit that was interested in forming that will be OPC 526, that will be our secretaries' union. They met and ratified that last month after some negotiations in early August. There's nothing other to say other than our secretaries are the backbones of our buildings. They're the first people that people encounter from the public. They're answering phones, they are filling in for the nurse when the nurse is out, they do everything in our buildings as well as provide administrative support to our principals. We're proud of them. We feel that the tentative agreements that were signed represent a fair deal for both this group of employees and the district and we're pleased to present them to the board for your consideration.
Great. Can I have a motion to approve the OPC negotiated agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Roll please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.